Call a meeting order, I'd like to welcome everyone to the December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, regularly scheduled for the Council meeting and then when the heart of Council chambers please stand for the pledge of allegiance, Lord's Prayer, and all the signs of service serving and for the council chair.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, a kingdom become, there will be none on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and give us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thank you, King of power, glory, and ever and ever.
Okay, maybe Seaton. The clerks, may I start or all? Kelly Gangel, here. Pat Hobus, here. Beth Gilman.
Here.
Richard Morgan.
I'm here.
Margaret Phillips.
Here.
Jerry Trolley. Thank you. Counsel, you have received the November twenty-two, twenty twenty-two regular meeting minutes.
Madam President, I move to approve the November twenty-second regular meeting.
And Seaton, I would second.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Gilman. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same side. Motion carries, November twenty-two, twenty twenty-two regular meeting minutes are... The chair notes certification has been made regarding compliance with the rules and notifications of this meeting. We have no guest presentation, no... The executive office is yours. Just another reminder that the December twenty-seventh meeting, council meeting, has been moved to December twentieth at six p.m. here at the... And there is one new ordinance this evening, it's forty-five dash twenty-two. It can go through all three grades. It has been assigned to the Finance Committee and so we'll set some sort of meeting at some point. That's all I have to say. Move on to the mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone. Just a quick update on the forward-looking infrastructure project. You know, it's been almost four years now since this discussion has been underway in our community. Wanted to let you know that the planning phase of this, the discussion phase, has kind of concluded. We're moving on to, well into the design phase. It's probably ninety-nine percent complete at that stage. Pogomar Design Group has had multiple tours throughout the community. Mr. Colston, myself, and several others in the city have had countless meetings with Pogomar to talk about which water lines and why, and then, you know, it moves every day. And the past couple of days, we've had a series of meetings with the State Infrastructure Bank and U.S. Department of Agriculture to move into the financing stage of this plan. With the designs pretty much set, it's now time to sit down and talk with these folks, okay, this is what we need, because we need to move forward. We have had preliminary discussions with them throughout this whole process to keep them informed on the status. Soon we'll get into the construction phase of this whole process, and we hope at some point in the near future, we'll have Pogomar in here to bring everybody up to speed on where we stand at this point. And I know Mr. Trolley is going to ask, since I can just tell, he's going to ask this question. You know, several weeks ago, several months ago, I came in, we talked about the Hail Mary. That's probably not going to work out, just because, yeah, you can ask me. It just, there's so many different agencies involved, and the time required to do that, we'd be right where we are right now. But the plan is still, April fifteenth, or as soon as they can start making asphalt, that Phase A, or Plan A, Phase One will begin, so that the infrastructure project will begin this April. I don't know if I mentioned this the last time or not, but Portage Resale Center, you know, the community-minded, they had their grant giveaway a couple of weeks ago at the office, and this is the eleventh year for this. And in the first ten years, they had given away a total of one million dollars. This year, they gave out two-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars in grants to local agencies, and I'm proud to announce that the Port Clinton Fire and Rescue Department received forty-thousand dollars in grants from the Portage Resale Center that's going to be used to replace the air packs, the SCBAs, self-contained breathing apparatus. So that's a positive, money from the community going back to support the community. You've all seen the pictures that were sent out and passed around, but for the community in general, the playground at Portage Park, that was acquired primarily through, or partially through funds from a grant from the Ottawa County Parks District, has been installed. The mulch was put in just earlier this week, and there were kids already down there, even in this cold temperature, using that. I want to thank Mr. Bealow, who wrote the grant, and Ms. Sandy there for doing a lot of the due diligence to make that happen. It's a great addition to that park, which is used quite a bit. Folks, this Saturday at eleven a.m. is Rees Across America. They will be at the Far Cemetery on Third Street, I get it confused, Lakeview River View, but it's the Far Cemetery at eleven a.m. for Rees Across America, and encourage everyone that can to attend that great ceremony. In general, the leaf pickup and brush pickup that has been underway throughout the fall is concluded. City crews are moving on now to prepare for winter activities. That's not to say that if there is another storm that rolls through and knocks down branches and whatnot, that brush pickup won't be back on the table, but the official, go up and down each street, that process has concluded for the season. Santa is going to make a couple more trips to the Port Clinton area on Wednesday, both tomorrow and next Wednesday. He'll be at the Santa House from five to six, and then this coming Sunday from noon until one. And just a side note, Santa was at the public library a few weeks ago, and he called me after the visit, because there were two unique things that were asked for. A young fellow, probably four or five years old, by the name of Hunter Green, and that really is his name, he asked for a street sweeper for Christmas. So Santa called me, and we made some arrangements, and Luke Johnson reached out to young Hunter's parents, and there's plans in place to give Mr. Green a ride on a street sweeper. And then, asking for some community assistance here, there was another young lady, and unfortunately, Santa wasn't smart enough to remember the name, and there wasn't an elf around to remember it either, and the folks at the library didn't recognize this individual, it was a female. She had long, straight, long hair with red streaks in it, and she asked for a purple stethoscope, which, again, was a very unique gift. Santa reached out to me, I reached out to the hospital. The hospital has a purple stethoscope, but we're still trying to track down who this person was. So if anyone listening to this on the Internet, or any of you know of an individual with long, straight hair, red streaks in it, that would like a purple stethoscope, please give me a call, I'll let Santa know, and we'll make those arrangements. This Sunday at six o'clock is an event being sponsored by numerous churches here in town called Journey's End. This will be the second time this event will take place in the city. It starts at six p.m. at Trinity United Methodist Church, and it's kind of a reenactment of Marian Joseph's trip around Bethlehem, trying to find a place to live. It does involve walking about a quarter mile, goes from Trinity to St. John to St. Thomas to RJ's Ice Cream, to the back building at the Art Guest in behind Wendy's, the DZ Bone, and finally concluding with hot chocolate and cookies back at Trinity United Methodist Church. Free event, open to the public, again, six p.m. Gather at the Narthex of Trinity United Methodist Church. Some in this room, I'm not one of them, but some in this room have live Christmas trees, and I'm already getting questions, what do we do with our live Christmas tree? And there's two options. Republic Services will pick up your live Christmas tree, make sure all the decorations are off of it, put it at the curb during your regular pickup. The week of December twenty-sixth and the week of January first are the two weeks that they'll come through to pick up Christmas trees. The Plan B on that, African Safari Wildlife Park, they collect live Christmas trees after the season to use as habitat and feed for the animals out there. You can call the administrative offices for African Safari Wildlife Park at four-one-nine-seven-three-two thirty-six oh six, seven-three-two thirty-six oh six, extension four, to make arrangements to drop off your live Christmas tree after the holiday season. Unless anyone else has any questions, that concludes my report for this evening, Madam President.
Does anyone have a question? The mayor.
Oh, he answered mine.
What did the treasurer report?
Yes, as of twelve-twelve-two thousand twenty-two, our bed tax collected stands at three-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars and twenty-eight cents, and our dock tax collected stands at an even twenty-one thousand dollars.
Thank you. Any other questions?
How is that comparing to last year?
I don't have last year's balances in front of me, but I do have our, we budgeted probably off last year's amounts, and we, our budgeted amounts were two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand in bed tax, so we're up seventy-two thousand dollars, seventy-three almost. And then the dock tax, we budgeted twenty-seven thousand, twenty-eight thousand, and we're at twenty-one thousand. And I think that's because we budgeted a little higher erroneously, because we had done more diligent efforts in collecting past history bed tax, or dock taxes. So we overbudgeted a little bit, but we're overall, we're over sixty-five thousand ahead of what we expected this year.
Thank you.
Aldrich.
Thank you, Madam President. Prior to the meeting, I handed out a brief informal study that we completed here at the city about salaries for counsel, for the law director, and we looked at similar cities of populations, and then we got the information, which compares to what the city of Port Clinton has back in two thousand and seven. I could wait until the second or third meeting to get more information on that, but I just wanted to make sure everybody had the handout. No, I'm not going to push on, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Colston.
Nothing tonight. I think the mayor covered, unless anybody has any questions.
Did you have one, Mark? When do you think that the infrastructure projects will go out to bid? Is that...
Yeah, the A above ground should go out to bid around the middle of, it'll go out to bid in January, probably be finalized in March. As the mayor stated, it'll start April. The other one will probably be out to bid, the B, as we sit here today, will probably be out sometime early fall and be done by October-ish, November-ish, as far as the award date and all that, and getting all the i's dotted and t's crossed. So, and as you remember, it's probably an eighteen-month deal, so it'll be sometime in the beginning of twenty-five before all of that would be done, basically.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Plenary reports. Mrs. Finance, Ms. Phillips.
Good morning, Madam President. I am looking back possibly having a committee meeting on Wednesday, December twenty-first at six p.m. to discuss ordinance forty-five twenty-two. I could be asked for this. What? December twenty-first.
December twenty-first, yes. The Wednesday, that's... You can't do that. I can do this.
Okay. Seven, you can... Seven. Okay.
Seven o'clock?
Seven o'clock. So we will have a committee meeting on December twenty-first at seven o'clock.
Thank you. Ms. Phillips, Safety Services.
Thank you, Madam President. We met before this meeting, and we did approve three, and we're going to ask for a removal of one of the possibility for ordinances when we get to that point of the meeting. I think you did a really good job, is very involved, you're doing well. Thank you.
Economically, can you develop it, Ms. Gilman?
Only that we will have our meeting after, it's usually after the last conference, it'll be the twentieth immediately following this meeting.
Motion under correspondence, under correspondence, we have Safety and Services Committee meeting minutes from November eleven, twenty twenty-two. Planning Commission letter, zoning map amendment from December eighth, twenty twenty-two. Planning Commission meeting minutes, October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two.
Madam President, can you add the financial report from the auditor at that point?
Thank you. I have a motion to add the financial report from December thirty of twenty twenty-two to...
I suck. Oh, Jerry.
Thank you, Mrs. Gilman. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same side. Thank you, motion carries. Does Counsel wish to take any further action as to correspondence receiving?
Madam President, make a motion to approve correspondence receiving.
Thank you. I have a second. Thank you, Mrs. Gilman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same side. Thank you, motion carries. And move on to the meeting of ordinance and amendments. The clerk, please read by Title Number only, ordinance thirty-five dash twenty-two.
Ordinance number thirty-five dash twenty-two, an ordinance to approve October twenty twenty-two, replacing pages to the Port Clinton certified ordinances and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Counsel, wish to take any action as to ordinance thirty-five dash twenty-two.
Madam President, I believe we retain the emergency clause in ordinance thirty-five dash twenty-two.
Thank you. I have a second. Thank you, Mr. Trolley. Any discussion? I have a motion by Mrs. Gilman, seconded by Mr. Trolley, to retain the emergency clause as to ordinance thirty-five dash twenty-two. Will the clerk please call the roll? Kelly Gangel?
Yes.
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries by a vote of six-zero. Does Counsel wish to take any further action as to ordinance thirty-five dash twenty-two?
Madam President, I believe we adopt ordinance thirty-five dash twenty-two.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? I have a motion by Mrs. Gilman, seconded by Mr. Trolley, to adopt ordinance thirty-five dash twenty-two. The clerk, please read. Would the clerk please, please call the roll. Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Kelly Gangel?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries by a vote of six-zero, ordinance thirty-five dash twenty-two is adopted. The clerk, please read by Title Number only, ordinance thirty-six dash twenty-two.
Ordinance thirty-six dash twenty-two, an ordinance prohibiting public urination in the city of Port Clinton and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Counsel, wish to take any action as to ordinance thirty-six dash twenty-two.
Madam President, from the committee, from our Safety Service Committee, we did, in our meetings, we've had two meetings, but our two meetings has that we believe that this is something that should be passed, and we decided three-zero that we should definitely go to emergency.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel, wish to take any...
Madam President?
Yes.
Make a motion to retain the emergency clause in ordinance thirty-six twenty-two.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Phillips. Any discussion? My question, urgency?
Yeah, that's my question. It was on two hundred years without this. Quickly, have a...
The emergency clause means that the mayor can sign it.
Why do we need to?
That's my...
We'll have the...
Well, we have the wallai drop coming. We're going to have a thousand people downtown. People are peeing in the sidewalks. What's, why not?
One of the few committed communities without this type of ordinance, and that's why we felt that we should have it.
I don't know, that's not what they're asking. That's not what I'm...
Everything's emergency.
Everything's emergency, so nothing's an emergency, so I...
Well, we have the wallai drop coming up.
Well, we've had the wallai for how many years in the world without this, and it's high. I think we use emergency clause way too much, but anyway.
As I've explained, I mean, that's counsel's choice, how they vote for something, but there has to be a motion on the table for it to be decided, so that's why there's a motion.
Right, understood.
So, so it's your choice.
Yeah, we're asking the question, yes. We made a choice.
Yes. So, administration, your feelings on...
At the moment, the only recourse that law enforcement has is to charge with indecent exposure, is that correct?
Indecent exposure.
Which, oh, go ahead.
At this point, we're one of the few cities that does not have this, which is a bit shocking, because at this point, if law enforcement has somebody urinating in public, they could be charged with disorderly conduct or with indecent exposure. Indecent exposure, you could end up on the sex offender registry for going in the bathroom with disorderly conduct, you know, somebody else would have to see both of those offenses. So if this caused annoyance and convenience and alarm to another, so they would have to prove that. So this just basically states if you're urinating in public, minor misdemeanor, waivable offense, you can pay that to the court, call it a day. As far as the emergency clause goes, we do have the wallai drop coming up, which we do not want a repeat of prior years, where there are people urinating all over the place.
Do we have Portage John's?
Do we have what?
Do we have Portage John's?
No, so you're left to...
Yes, there are.
Oh, there are? How many? Where?
They're right next to the fish company, four or five-ish.
Okay, so you have four or five next to the fish company.
Plus the private.
Plus the other one.
And then you're just left to finding a business that's open, where you can do that.
What business might that be, sir?
Yeah.
I think it's hard, yes. So, I mean, and I know, yeah, so I'm sure people don't want businesses urinated upon, or the sidewalk, or, you know, also, you know, others, you know, probably need to see that, so...
What this boils down to, in my opinion, is the fact that when my administrative started, we started looking at all the things that hadn't been addressed for however many years, and stuff that just slipped through the cracks or wasn't viewed as a priority. We came across this, and were quite frankly shocked, like Ms. Shanker said, that we're one of the only communities around that doesn't have this already, just trying to correct the wrong. Whether or not it happens later tonight or thirty days from tonight, I don't have an opinion one way or the other.
Can I interject? I think what their question is, why we have the declaring of emergency after the ordinance? You might want to explain that a little bit, too.
Please just explain it to me, I think, you know.
So why are you guys questioning?
Why is everything going to... Which was thirty, was waiting thirty days?
In my mind, the fact that it waits thirty days, is that an Ohio law, a Port Clinton law?
That's a state law.
State law, okay.
It's a state law.
And this is in there for a reason. And, I mean, like, for some people, they're going to watch it or read it, and if they didn't see it before, they go, you know, I don't know about that, and they have thirty days to at least come talk about it. There's a reason.
No, they don't have thirty days to come talk about it. They have thirty days to file a referendum, which means that it would go on to the next ballot for the election.
But they have thirty days to react to it.
Yes.
Right. And I understand why sometimes you can't do that, but I also understand why, there's six here, and they all, there's six here, and I think five are emergencies. I don't think it was meant to be used for this.
They also have three readings.
I don't...
Yeah, six weeks.
They have a chance. Do you want to come in and talk about it?
I understand, I understand that, I...
And they are posted.
And that's been questioned before, it's come up, I think most of us on council have questioned this, like, why is it emergency clause and everything, you come on, and there is six weeks that go into it, there's committee discussions, I mean, you can see right now our public participation is not at a high. A lot of people just, you know, they can watch the videos, they can see stuff, they can see color, start sharing stuff, you know, there's so many ways to communicate with them. It is a six weeks, so it's not like an emergency. Some things we do cast on a first reading, they are time-sensitive, we've got some grant deadlines, blah, 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 which you guys understand. This is just, it is that thirty-day referendum, the mayor can sign this, it can get enacted quickly with this one. And I know somebody that was charged with public indecency and was registered sex offender for peeing outside of Taco Bell years and years and years ago. I don't want us to be doing that to people in the city, I mean, to me, that's bothersome. I don't know why we didn't, I just assumed this was a law already, because the stuff that happens all around the area, but here we are, and I think enforcing it before New Year's, which is a big event, because the police might be out and active, people might be doing things they shouldn't be, and, you know, should they be tied to a sex offender or a... I don't know, I don't know.
So if someone is urinating in public, and their genitals are showing, are they then not charged with it?
That's a difference. Well, there is a difference, and Deana explained it a little bit to us, there is a difference.
So, in order to be charged with public indecency, you have to be knowingly showing your genitals to somebody else. So if somebody walks in the middle of this room and drops their pants and shows their genitals to everybody, that's indecent exposure. If somebody is urinating in the bathroom, they're not knowingly showing their genitals to somebody else, and they really should not...
But they're not being charged with that.
They should not be charged with indecent exposure.
So that should be an issue now?
It would not be an issue if, once this passes.
But it is an issue now if people are getting charged for not showing their genitals, but getting charged as they are showing their genitals.
Well, it depends on how...
It's the...
Those are the two actions officers pass, so it depends.
It's the type of the offender. So if somebody is using the restroom and their genitals are not completely covered, and they're minding their own business, trying to use the restroom, it's public urination. If somebody openly just drops their pants and wants to show the world what's going on, that is indecent exposure. The problem is, is this city does not have an ordinance that deals specifically with public urination, so the police are forced to choose between one of two sections to charge somebody who is just urinating. And the way that they charge is if no one sees any part of a genital, they'll charge them with disorderly conduct, which is another party, other than the police officer, would have to see it, and disorderly conduct is did cause annoyance, inconvenience, or alarm. So a third party has to say, I saw this, and I'm annoyed, I'm inconvenienced, I'm alarmed. If somebody, unfortunately, does not cover up their genitals, and someone, a third party sees it, then they would have to charge them with indecent exposure. So to take, it's, once again, some of these ordinances, you know, either were not written or are old, and you're fitting, you know, the square peg in the round hole.
Yeah, and no one's questioning that we don't need that ordinance, right? It's, we're just kind of talking circles now, seeing how many times we can say genitals and accounts of me.
Well, I mean...
It's just not an emergency, yeah, so...
I can't wait.
And then, no, yeah, no one's questioning that we need no ordinance, I know there are probably people all over downtown, you know.
Yeah, the emergency seems like a laugh, when you look at, like, this has been six weeks, there's been committee meetings, there's a lot of stuff, now whether or not people come and participate and know what's going on, I don't know how to get people more engaged, on the basis of challenge.
Right, and on the flip side, that is six weeks.
It's been six days.
It's thirty more days.
Right, right.
And we do...
Right, I get it, yeah.
And we do, I mean, prior to both of you being on, before Ms. Hobus was on too, public comment used to be at the end of the meeting, which did give people a chance to talk about anything that was on the agenda till after it passed. So we voted to change it, and public comment is at the beginning, and they can ask about anything that's on the agenda, or, you know, or anything like that. So being proactive, we tried to move that to the beginning, so people have questions that they can ask before something, so. So as far as it, I mean, I guess declaring an emergency, it's just if you wait the thirty days, or if it is signed and goes into effect quickly, so.
Additionally, also, for the emergency clause, there, the mayor has the power to veto any legislation, and so if the mayor does not sign that immediately with the emergency clause, then he, then he has that power to veto, so that's another reason why there's thirty days. But if the mayor is in agreement, or is part of administration, not a voting member, some cities have mayors as part of their council, they're usually sit as the president of the council, so that changes things for other jurisdictions. We don't have that issue, but if we did, the mayor can have thirty days to veto if he wants.
So where do we have now?
We have a motion by Mr. Trolley, seconded by Ms. Phillips, to retain the emergency clause. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll? Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Kelly Gangel?
No.
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
No.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, motion carries by a vote of four to two. This Counsel, wish to take any further action as to ordinance thirty-six dash twenty-two?
Madam President?
Yes, Judge.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance thirty-six dash twenty-two.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Trolley, seconded by Ms. Phillips, to adopt ordinance thirty-six dash twenty-two. Will the court please call the roll?
Kat Hovis?
Yes.
Richard Morgen?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Kelly Gangle?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried by a vote of six to zero, ordinance thirty-six dash twenty-two is adopted. Will the court please read by title and summary, ordinance thirty-seven dash twenty-two?
Ordinance number thirty-seven dash twenty-two, an ordinance amending section five-two-one point zero sixteen, five-two-one point zero seven C, five-two-one, one, point one-four, five-two-one point one-five, of chapter five-two-one, support Clinton codified ordinances and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, council wish to take any action as to ordinance thirty-seven dash twenty-two?
Madam President, we've discussed this one also under S M S committee, and we, a vote of three oh to ten, we thought that it was not necessary because we picked up a few little extra things in those technical changes.
Madam President, make a motion to retain the emergency clause.
Do I have a second?
A second?
Any discussion? Okay, will the court please call the roll?
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Kelly Gangle?
Yes.
Kat Hovis?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Richard Morgen?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries by a vote of six to zero. Does council wish to take any further action as to ordinance thirty-seven dash twenty-two?
Madam President?
I move to adopt thirty-seven twenty-two.
Thank you, do I have a second?
A second?
Thank you. Any discussion?
I just have one question. I, I'm looking at this, and it says, five-two-one point zero seven C, receptacles for rubbish, whoever violates a section guilty of minor misdemeanor. Well, what, what violation, it, it's not in here. I know only the changes are put in here. So what am I violating? It says, whoever violates the section guilty of minor, first misdemeanor for first offense. But I don't know what that section is.
That's when you pull up the codified ordinances and then refer to that section in the codified ordinances. What that section is, is that all trash, rubbish, whatever you want to call it, has to be in the approved containers, um, to the city, which is Republic. I amended that to make it a minor misdemeanor as opposed to what it was previously, which was a misdemeanor of the fourth degree.
Which is worse?
The fourth degree.
The fourth degree, they start with, it's like the tier system. A misdemeanor of the first degree is the most severe misdemeanors. It carries up to a thousand dollar fine and six months in jail. A misdemeanor of the fourth degree, you can get served thirty days in jail for that. So that's why I bumped it down, the entire section, to a minor misdemeanor, which is just a hundred and fifty dollar fine.
So if I put the wrong container out, or is it something I'm leaving it out too long? I don't go to jail, I get fined.
Yep.
Can we actually double check something? Uh, when I looked this up originally, uh, five-two-one point zero seven C was a section on offenses. Can we, can we, can we verify with this? That's what I found on our cop, if I weren't on mine. No.
Zero seven? C and Charles C.
I don't necessarily disagree with that, I'm just trying to...
Right, no, I, I just checked that piece of it too, because when I pulled it up, it was different.
Some of these books were not updated properly when I was, prior to me.
Give me one minute, please.
I'll have to go to the online. They are available on the one this morning.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't know that. Where, where is it?
Oh, A M, A M legal is what we're always calling them.
If you go to our website, for all the council, if you go to our website and go to Law Director, and I'll make sure her picture, it says codified ordinances, it'll take you directly to, and then you just need to, you just need to hit the search.
Thank you, that would save me asking this question.
Give me one second, let me just pull it up.
Do a word search, or an actual number search.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And then it pulls up, it'd be like a Google search.
I should have known.
But it's a very, very accurate precise word search. If you know the title, the chapter number, fill it out by the word. Word and number, you can search by numbers, right? Chapter number, yeah. Yeah, it's receptacles for rubbish.
All right, so five-two-one point zero seven, correct?
Yeah, C and Charles.
Five-two-one point zero seven, the only thing I changed was the penalty section. So, five-two-one point zero seven A states, no person shall place or dispose of rubbish, garbage, refuse, bottles, cans, or debris of any kind in the public property of the city, except in such places and within such receptacles as are provided by the city in public areas. Residents on private property shall not dispose of rubbish, garbage, refuse, bottles, cans, or debris occurring from such residents in any refuse receptacle provided for users of the city-owned or city-controlled land. The owners of such rubbish, garbage, refuse, bottles, cans, or debris of any kind shall not be relieved of any responsibilities under the provisions of this section if the rubbish, garbage, refuse, bottles, cans, or debris is under the control or possession of any other person. So that's A. B states, any rubbish, garbage, refuse, bottles, cans, or debris found on public property of the city, which is identified as being that of a resident, is prima facie evidence of violation of this section. Currently, what it states is whoever violates the section is guilty of a misdemeanor of the fourth degree for a first offense, a misdemeanor of the second degree for a second offense, and a misdemeanor of the first degree for any offense thereafter. I only amended C because when we did the rest of section five-two-one, I made those minor misdemeanors as well. So I went back, and when we cleaned up the rest of the section, I made it a missed, minor misdemeanor. Because all the other penalties are jailable offenses, and we thought that was a little extreme for tr- for trash.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Kelly Gangle, have anything?
No.
I'm sorry, I don't know what I was looking at then, because I, I was, I do pull them up online. I gotta say, I'm like, why is this defense is on it? But...
That's fine.
Obviously.
Um, I have a motion by Ms. Phillips, seconded by Mrs. Phillips, to adopt ordinance thirty-seven dash twenty-two.
Will the court please call the roll?
Kelly Gangle?
Yes.
Kat Hovis?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Richard Morgen?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries by a vote of six to zero, ordinance thirty-seven dash twenty-two is hereby adopted. Will the court please read by title and summary, ordinance thirty-eight dash twenty-two?
Ordinance number thirty-eight dash twenty-two, an ordinance prohibiting cyberbullying and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, does council wish to take any action as to ordinance thirty-eight dash twenty-two?
Madam President, at one of our safety service meetings, we also discussed this, especially after having seen the presentation by, uh, Robert Corbin Carpenter. And that we felt this was, has written very good, so we, uh, three to zero approved for it to be, to be placed under elected.
Thank you, does council wish to take any action as to...
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Trolley?
Make a motion to retain the emergency clause.
Thank you, do I have a second?
A second?
Thank you, Mrs. Phillips. Any discussion? Will the court, or I have a motion by Mr. Trolley, seconded by Mrs. Phillips, to retain the emergency clause as to ordinance thirty-eight dash twenty-two. Will the court please call the roll?
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Kat Hovis?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Richard Morgen?
Yes.
Kelly Gangle?
Yes.
Motion carries by a vote of six to zero, emergency clause is hereby retained as to ordinance thirty-eight dash twenty-two. Does council wish to take any further action as to ordinance thirty-eight dash twenty-two?
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Phillips.
Make a motion to retain ordinance thirty, or to adopt ordinance thirty-eight dash twenty-two.
Thank you, do I have a second?
A second?
Thank you, Mrs. Phillips. Any further discussion? I have a motion by Mr. Trolley, seconded by Mrs. Phillips, to adopt ordinance thirty-eight dash twenty-two. Will the court please call the roll?
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Kelly Gangle?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Kat Hovis?
Yes.
Richard Morgen?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried by a vote of six to zero, ordinance thirty-eight dash twenty-two is hereby adopted. Will the court please read by title and summary, ordinance thirty-nine dash twenty-two?
Ordinance number thirty-nine dash twenty-two, an ordinance creating residential parking restrictions that prohibit parking or storing motor vehicles, campers, boats, and watercraft in a front yard or side yard, abutting a street or a low, excuse me, or alley, on a property used for residential purposes and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, does council wish to take any action as to ordinance thirty-nine dash twenty-two?
Madam President, our committee met and discussed this over two meetings, and we would like this removed.
Tabled.
Tabled, and perhaps, we're not sure if we're going to bring it back the way it's written now, so what do we have to say?
Okay. Um, I, I have a motion by Ms. Phillips to table ordinance thirty-nine dash twenty-two. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mrs. Phillips. Any further discussion at this point? Okay. I have a motion by Ms. Phillips, seconded by Mrs. Gilman, to table ordinance thirty-nine dash twenty-two. Will the court please call the roll?
Richard Morgen?
Uh, yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Kelly Gangle?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Kat Hovis?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried by a vote of six to zero, ordinance thirty-nine dash twenty-two is table at this time. I'll move on to ordinance forty dash twenty-two. Will the court please read by title and summary, ordinance forty dash twenty-two?
Ordinance number forty dash twenty-two, an ordinance appropriating certain funds for the operation of the city of Port Clinton, Ohio.
Thank you, does council wish to take any action as to ordinance forty dash twenty-two?
Madam President, I move to adopt ordinance forty dash twenty-two.
Thank you, do I have a second? I'll circle. Thank you, Mr. Trolley. Any discussion? Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Trolley, to adopt ordinance forty dash twenty-two. Will the court please call the roll?
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Richard Morgen?
Yes.
Kelly Gangle?
Yes.
Kat Hovis?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries by a vote of six to zero, ordinance forty dash twenty-two is hereby adopted. We'll move on to second reading. Will the court please read by title and summary, ordinance forty-one dash twenty-two?
Ordinance number forty-one dash twenty-two, an ordinance amending section one-eight-three point zero-five-one B, one A, of chapter one-eighty-three of the city of Port Clinton, codified ordinances regulating income tax effective January one, twenty sixteen.
Thank you, does council wish to take any action as to ordinance forty-one dash twenty-two this evening? Seeing none, ordinance forty-one dash twenty-two, we move to its third reading on December twentieth, twenty twenty-two, at the next regularly scheduled council meeting, December twentieth, twenty twenty-two. Will the court please read by title and summary, ordinance forty-two dash twenty-two?
Ordinance number forty-two dash twenty-two, an ordinance authorizing the chief of police to enter into an agreement with the state of Ohio Department of Natural Resources for financial assistance for the operation of the Port Clinton Harbor Patrol and appropriating funds.
Thank you, does council wish to take any action as to ordinance forty-two dash twenty-two? Seeing none, ordinance forty-two dash twenty-two, we move to its third reading at the next regularly scheduled council meeting, December twentieth, twenty twenty-two. Will the court please read by title and summary, ordinance forty-three dash twenty-two?
Ordinance number forty-three dash twenty-two, an ordinance authorizing and directing the director of safety and service to enter into an agreement with Pogmeier Design Group Incorporated, a Kleinf, excuse me, a Kleinfelder Company, for final design and bidding for the roadway pavement resurfacing improvement portion of the Port Clinton infrastructure improvement project and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, does council wish to take any action this evening as to ordinance forty-three dash twenty-two?
Madam President, may I ask, is there just no time, um, sunset of on that portion?
For that portion, no.
I'm sorry?
For that portion, no.
Okay, thank you.
Next meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Seeing no action, ordinance forty-three dash twenty-two, we move to its third reading at the next regularly scheduled council meeting on December twenty, twenty twenty-two. Will the court please read by title and summary, ordinance forty-four dash twenty-two?
Ordinance number forty-four dash twenty-two, an ordinance amending ordinance number six dash twenty-two as amended, as further amended by ordinance number twenty-three dash twenty-two of the city of Port Clinton.
Thank you, does council wish to take any action as to ordinance forty-four dash twenty-two? Seeing none, ordinance forty-four dash twenty-two, we move to its third reading on December twentieth, twenty twenty-two, the next regularly scheduled council meeting. We'll move on to first readings. Will the court please read by title and summary, ordinance forty-five dash twenty-two?
Ordinance number forty-five dash twenty-two, an ordinance studying the compensation of certain elected officials of the city and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, does council wish to take any action as to ordinance forty-five dash twenty-two? Seeing none, ordinance forty-five dash twenty-two, we move to the second reading at the next regularly scheduled council meeting on December twentieth, twenty twenty-two. I'm gonna ask you a question. Did you get these numbers offline, or did a representative provide them to you?
We contacted every jurisdiction listed and requested a public records request, and that's the numbers that were provided.
Okay.
And, Madam President, I don't know if this is a good time to have a brief discussion since all of council is here about that ordinance. I know in pre-council, there was some preliminary discussion.
Maybe Mrs. Phillips is gonna have, are you having your next meeting after, I mean, if you want to have a discussion?
In case any amendments need to be made, I know that when we initially put this together, the mayor and the auditor opted out of an increase. And I think the mayor could probably speak more to that as to what we discussed.
Uh, just, yeah, um, in my mind, over, over the years, the mayor's job has been the mayor's job. You know, it's a, it's a part-time job, Tracy does all the work. Not to, not to pick on my friend here, but the auditor's job, or the treasurer's job, has pretty much been the treasurer's job since I can recall. The, the auditor's job has pretty much been the auditor's job. Council's job has pretty much been council's job in the sixteen plus minus years that I've been around here. The one thing that has really changed, and it's, it's not changed not only with this body, but in world in, in general, is the law director's job. You know, I can, I can recall a time when you could go into a store and shake the, the guy's hand and say, I'll be back next Tuesday with, with payment, and be back next Tuesday with, with payment. Now, everything the city does runs through the law director's office, and it always has. Previous law directors have had the ability to have other careers and another source of income. As Mrs. Shanker has, has done some research, she's found more and more full-time positions in law directors, and I believe, I don't, this is just my assumption here, that it's because the position of law director has changed so dramatically over the years, and every one of us in this room and others have relied on the law director for just about everything that, that's done on a day-to-day basis. From tracking down bed tax, tracking down boat tax, following up with parking tickets, following up with, with all the other stuff, the, all the zoning stuff that we're, we're implementing. It all flows through her office in one way or the other. Probably not enough, in my opinion, but that's neither here nor there, not for another, for another time. But I, I think it's just, it's time. It's still, as I understand it, this position is still part-time in, in theory, but we're starting to get that pay where, where it probably should be.
With this data, is there any way to get some, like, demographics or, because the population doesn't really tell us much. It doesn't tell us the mean income, or the tax rate, or the budgets of the cities. Like, is there some little bit of demographics we can get with that, too?
We would have to supplement public records requests.
Or like from census data or something, because like the, you know, the mean income and tax base that one area brings in, even if the population might be close, might be completely different. Like Catawba, their, the income they have, or their mean income is completely different than Port Clinton. Just to kind of see, the numbers don't really, like, population doesn't really do a whole lot for us, but is that something, I don't know how hard that would be to get, like, from census data, like, most counties have that in their annual reports, or...
Regional planning may have that.
Something. Okay.
At the courthouse.
And they usually get those annual reports. I know in Ottawa County, I don't know about anywhere else, but we have a lot of information in our county. I don't know how anybody else does it. Just to kind of see. Just to kind of see.
Yeah, I don't know if they do statewide, or if they just.
Just.
Just some, okay. And we can talk about that at the next meeting.
Yeah. Anybody else have any questions or comment at this point? Okay. Will you like to business move forward? Mrs. Phillips?
Let me get my head around this. Nothing to make mad, President, other than we will be having our committee meeting on December twenty-first at seven o'clock to discuss ordinance forty-five twenty-two. Mrs. Shanker, will you be there as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we're going to be here before Christmas, so.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Troy?
No, I'm low enough for the next meeting. I forgot my list. No, Madam President, I'll.
Mr. Morgan?
Nothing.
Mrs. Gangle?
No, I don't think so, I may have some follow-up questions regarding this. My full-time job, I worked in a, a corporate HR department, and I have a master's in HR, so that's why I was asking about the inventory data. So maybe, just going to kind of talk about a few demographic things as we look into it, I may have some follow-up questions, but I'm good for tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Phillips?
Thank you, Madam President. Obviously, our committee's safety service has really been busy, but there was one thing that I wanted to bring up. The mayor mentioned before that we got some money from a portage resale, but I think you've got to remember too, they also awarded the Port Clinton Fire and Rescue money last year, it's a total of seventy-seven thousand dollars that has come through portage resale, through their grants and loans and giveaways and all that kind of thing, and I think that just shows locally, people are willing to do things, because that place is always busy. Always busy.
Thank you, Madam President, that's it.
Mrs. Gilman?
I want to take, thanks, Sienna, for the, please, and Deana, for the work she does, because we had some tough ordinances, we had a couple interesting things come down the pipeline, and new council members may not have worked with our previous law director, who was very thorough. Deana does a good job, addresses the questions, is, is very accessible, and I appreciate that, so, just, uh, thank you very much. Yeah, we won't meet before the holidays, but happy Tuesday, everybody.
Thank you. Seeing no further business, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam President, I move this caucus body adjourned.
Have a second?
A second?
Thank you, Mrs. Phillips. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign.
Aye.
Or adjourn.